You're watching WSTV Digital Media.
Good afternoon. Welcome to the February 12, 2015 meeting of the City County Planning Board. We ask you at this time, would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Amen.
Today's meeting is being broadcast live by WSTV Digital Media. It will be rebroadcast at 10:00 a.m. Friday morning, again at 4:00 p.m. Sunday afternoon. But before we get into today's agenda, Paul has an announcement he'd like to make.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, everybody. I just wanted to call everyone's attention to what is on the screen in front of you, and I'll explain a little bit about that. The North Carolina Chapter of the American Planning Association has an initiative they've been doing for the last several years. It's called Great Places in North Carolina. And you all may recall that our own Fourth Street in downtown Winston-Salem won the Great Main Street in North Carolina designation last year. And they were -- and that actually wasn't what I was going to be talking about, but it won the designation last year, was honored at the General Assembly, and also with the ceremony here in Winston-Salem. This year, they are again starting the process over, and they have set up a new category of judging, and that's called Great Historic Rehabilitation. So that's one of the categories, and there were nominations made from throughout the state, and an expert panel picked six finalists for there to be a people's choice voting from now until February 27. And I'm glad to say that Wake Forest Innovation Quarter was selected as one of those six finalists. The voting started a couple days ago, and anyone can go online to greatplacesnc.org, and that will get you to the homepage over the Great Places there. And if you just scroll down on that homepage to Great Historic Rehabilitation, click on that, and then you'll have the six choices so that, of course, everybody can vote for Wake Forest Innovation Quarter there. But the winner of that is a popular vote, and the winner of that will be the winner of the designation and will be honored both statewide and locally. So I just want to encourage everyone, with all the fantastic progress that has been made in the Innovation Quarter, to go ahead and vote. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Paul. It appears that everything's on consent agenda today, so I'm going to dispense with reading of the rules, other than I'll remind you that items under Section B of our agenda will require final action by the appropriate elected body, either the City Council or County Commissioners. So as such, votes taken today will go to those bodies for their consideration. If -- we will have a public hearing later on the area plan, so anyone addressing the board today will please ask to give us your name, address, and zip code for the record before you begin your comments. First time visit with approval of minutes of January 8, '22, and '26 meetings. Were any additions, corrections to those minutes?
Most approved.
Second motion, Mr. Mulligan. Second, Mr. Lamb. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Now, according to Aaron King's present, our consent agenda.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. The first item is B1. It's docket F-1549, and this is a request to rezone a little under an acre from RS-40 to GI, General Industrial. And you can see the subject property there in yellow. This is up in the northeast corner of the county, in the Blues Creek area. You can see the surrounding zoning pattern. This site is actually surrounded by GI zoning, which is what this site was zoned prior to a rezoning a couple years ago. It had actually been zoned industrial since the '60s. This rezoning, if approved, would put it back to its original GI designation. Staff is supportive of this rezoning and recommends approval.
No one signed up in opposition. Anyone here opposed this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B2. This is zoning docket 3248, and this is a request to rezone a little over two acres from LB, limited business, limited business special use, and RS-9. It's a limited business, limited use. And you can see the site there on the north side of Country Club Road in yellow. It's in the Gordon Manor area. The petitioner did offer up some use limitations to try to pick out uses that were compatible with the neighborhood. They've offered up some buffering conditions above and beyond what the UDO requires, and they have offered to maintain one of the very large trees on that site. Staff felt this was consistent with the area plan and with legacy recommendations and would recommend approval of this request.
Anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B3. This is zoning docket W-2667, and this is a request for a final development plan for a restaurant without drive-through and MUS two-phase zoning. It's mixed-use two-phase zoning. You can see the site in yellow there. It's on the south side of Haynes Mill Road, east of University Parkway. It's part of the original Northern Quarters development. And this is a site plan that was submitted. You can see, it's kind of hard to see on this drawing, but Haynes Mill Road would be to the top of the screen. If you follow the mouse cursor, you can see where the restaurant is located. It actually faces internal to the parking lot. The rear of the building faces onto Haynes Mill Road, and they have submitted elevations. That top elevation is the view you would have from Haynes Mill Road. We did work with the petitioner. The original elevation just had, I think, three windows over here on the far left side. They did add a couple sets of windows to try to make that facade as attractive as they could, so we appreciate that, and we would recommend approval of this final development plan.
Anyone opposed to this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B4. It's zoning docket W-3249. This is a request to rezone a little under half an acre from limited business special use to limited business limited use. And this site is located on the south side of Renolda Road, just south of Yakima Road. You can see it there in yellow. It's got a small existing commercial building on site. This request would be for limited business for the uses of services, A offices, and retail store. We've reviewed this, and we feel it's consistent with the area plan and would recommend approval of this request.
Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion by Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Next item is B5. This is zoning docket W-3250, and this is a request to rezone, I think, about 3,400 and some odd square feet from RS-9 to pedestrian business limited use. This is located at the southwest corner of Waltham Street and Klein Street. You can see the site there in yellow. It contains a small historic, non-residential historic structure. And when staff reviewed this, although the area plan doesn't support a change in zoning for this site, as we worked with the petitioner on this, he did agree to a condition to maintain the existing structure and maintain it in accordance with the Secretary of Interior standards. So staff felt like that was a value to the community, and getting that assurance that building would be maintained was a reason to deviate from the area plan. So we would recommend approval of this PBL request.
Is anyone here opposed to this recommendation? Send none. Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion?
Yes.
Yeah. I do have concerns about this case. It is very, very small lot. The only parking would be, I don't understand, it's PB, but there is virtually zero parking except for a few tiny spaces in the back that butt right up to a home on the other side. There does not appear to be any room to put a buffer in, so they would need to get a variance, I believe.
Correct.
And it's right up against the house. There's a house on the other side, very close. I really do appreciate the proposed keeping of the historic property, and I understand the value of that. But I do think that limited zoning that they're asking for is a little too open-ended. I mean, it would allow retail as well as services A. And I think the retail may be too intense for this simply because of the small site and not knowing what kind of retail it would be. I'd be more comfortable with looking at like a special use zoning request where we would know what exactly was being proposed, and so I don't think I can support this.
Any other comments? Discussion? I have a motion for approval. All in favor? Any opposed? Mr. Duggan opposed. Thank you.
Okay. Next item is B6. This is zoning docket F-1550, and this is a request to rezone one acre from RS-9 to limited business special use. And this is up in Royal Hall on the east side of Bethania Royal Hall Road. We did receive a continuance request from the petitioner on this. They got it in by the automatic continuance deadline, so this will be continued to your May, or to your March meeting, rather. Moving on to subdivisions, this is item C1. It's subdivision 2015-004, and this is a subdivision on the east side of Metal Art Drive, and this is actually in the same boat. We received a continuance request on this also. We got it in by the deadline, so this will also be automatically continued to your March Item D1. This is Planning Board Review 2015-01, and this is a request for a lifecare community in RM18 zoning. This is on the north side of Indiana Avenue, west of University Parkway. You can see the site there in yellow. This is an extension of the Salem Town Campus, and this is only for about a 14 and a half acre portion of the larger tract that they own. And this is the site plan that was submitted with that request. You can see the large building there with associated parking and drive aisles, and then the elevations, I know they're kind of hard to see on here, but the elevations that were also submitted with this request. Staff has reviewed this. We felt it met UDO requirements and would recommend approval of this PBR.
This is not a public hearing item, so it was the wishes of the board.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
The last item is D2. This is Planning Board Review 2015-02, and this is a planning board review for a utility and AG zoning, and more specifically, a solar farm. You can see the site there in yellow. It's about 65 and a half acres on the south side of Royal Hall Germanton Road. And the site plan, you can see they're not exactly using the entire site. What's kind of hard to see, but what's in yellow there, those are rows, several dozen rows of solar panels there, and retaining a lot of the existing vegetation. This does comply with the newly adopted regulations for solar farms that were adopted last year, and staff does recommend approval of this PBR.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Lamb. Second, Mr. Mulligan. Any discussion? Those in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the next item is UDO 256. This text amendment is to, an amendment to the subdivision regulations, so the final decision on any changes to the subregs will be made by you, and it won't be going on to the elected boards. You'll make the final decision rather than a recommendation. This change came about when, it was brought to our attention when we were reviewing a minor subdivision exception, which is a staff-level approval, that a neighboring property owner who was concerned about the case did not have due process to get involved in the case. Historically, if there's a minor subdivision exception and staff approved it, it was simply approved, and if we denied it, then the applicant could appeal to the planning board. But if we approved one that a neighbor was unhappy about, they had no recourse. So after talking to the city and county attorneys and the North Carolina school government attorneys, they advised us to go ahead and switch our regulations so that the avenue for these minor subdivision exception appeals would be appealing to the zoning board of adjustment. So we've just gone in there, you see in your paperwork there, that we just struck out all of the process for appealing to this board and directed them to appeal the zoning board of adjustment, which is the proper place for that appeal to go. So with that, I'll just be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Any questions of staff? Okay. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. No one signed up. Is anyone like to speak in support of this? Anyone like to speak in opposition? Declare the public hearing closed.
Move approval.
Second. Motion, Mr. Mulligan. Second, Mr. Lamb. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. I guess we're through for the area plan update, man.
Yes. You got your briefing on it at the work session, and Kelly Bennett will do a briefer presentation of the plan and followed by the public hearing.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is, the next item's the North-Central Winston-Salem Area Plan Update. We've held four public meetings between September and December of last year. Between 50 and 60 citizens and stakeholder representatives attended these meetings. The planning area is located north of downtown and is bounded by Reynolds Boulevard, US-52, Martin Luther King Jr. Drive, and the Children's Home property. The area is mostly, or predominantly, single-family residential. There's also a great deal of industrial development and commercial recreational uses. Proposed changes mostly align with the 2007 plan. Some of the changes are removal of the Activity Center designation at Patterson and Northwest, and proposing adding an Activity Center at University Parkway and Deacon Boulevard. This is an area just south of Wake Forest University's campus, next to its athletics campus, and it has a great deal of potential. It could be a place where students and other people live, could also be mixed in with commercial development, institutional, office uses, and our main recommendation in this area is mixed-use area along Beatty Street and Deacon Boulevard, and perhaps adding a residential component to the western commercial areas when those are redeveloped, and adding some pedestrian connections. This is an aerial view of that eastern portion along Beatty and Deacon Boulevard, and this is the area we're recommending for mixed use. One of several possible site plans would use Beatty Street as a central corridor. This area could be developed in a number of different ways, and this is one such way. This is a view of Beatty Street, recent view. This is what, this is a sketch of what that area could look like with a mixture of uses, higher density residential and commercial uses. Major topic of conversation was the Revitalizing Urban Commercial Areas program. There are three RUCAs in the area, north side, Patterson-Glen and Patterson-Northwest. Patterson-Glen RUCA is in the Patterson-Glen Activity Center. This area has a lot of abandoned buildings, underused buildings, and it's a big concern to the neighbors in that area. This is an aerial view of the area, and of course, RUCAs funds need private investment, and they also need city council approval. But we looked at this area and came up with some ideas of what it could, what it could look like if the area was cleared of the current development, redevelopment, redeveloped. The site plan shows potential development scenario, uses Greenway Avenue as a central commercial spine. It'd be pedestrian-friendly. Parking areas would be along Patterson and Glen. Buildings would be facing Greenway rather than Patterson, which is across from an industrial This is a view of, potential view of Greenway, Greenway Avenue. Another RUCA area is Patterson-Northwest, and this is an area that Community and Business Development Office is partnering with the Union CDC, and they're exploring redevelopment of this area as a potential grocery store. Here's an aerial view. And we put together a site plan and a sketch of what a grocery store could look like in this area. This is the area now with the gas station on the corner and the grocery store behind it. And this would be redevelopment with the building pulled up to the street, parking to the side and rear. Other recommendations are two transportation plans. One is the Martin Luther King Jr. Drive Extension, which would go from University Parkway and connect Martin Luther King Jr. Drive to Northwest Boulevard. The other is the Renolda Road Connector, which would only be built if the Children's Home property was redeveloped, and that would connect any development to the east and the west so that potential development could have connections to the rest of the community. And this isn't a road that the city would be, would be building. This would be only if the Children's Home property were developed. Another recommendation in the Community Facilities section would be to build a new community center to replace the current Martin Luther King Jr. Community Center, which is in Kimberly Park. This recreation center is about 50 years old. It's really well-used, but seen better days. It doesn't meet ADA compliance and could be replaced. There's some edits and clarifications, and those are the printouts in front of you, and they're mainly about the flexibility of that mixed-use design in the University-Deacon Activity Center. Those are the underlined portions, and in the growth corridors section, just about language, about sites facing the growth corridors. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the area plan.
Any questions of Kelly at this time?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add a little conversation. Kelly, of course, just went over some changes that we would, a few changes that we would suggest. Let me mention one other area that I'm sure everyone has been paying attention to, certainly we at the staff have been, and that is that the discussion and disclosures of information concerning Haynes-Lorant School, which is in this area on Indiana Avenue. And as you know, the school board has been wrestling with this and was, is actually still getting additional testing on that site, but they have made a decision to move students out of that, out of that facility. But we've been following the discussion on it and some of the information that's been given. It's, it's a very complicated and changing situation as more information becomes available. I don't know that anyone has a complete handle on exactly what the implications are, but if the planning board would be interested in having some language in here that acknowledges that situation and gives some kind of general cautions, I don't think we know enough yet to make any changes in land use recommendations or anything like that, but certainly could make some reference to the situation. We have some, we have some language available if the, if the board would like to do that. So I just wanted to add that to the, to the, at the end of what Kelly said.
There are lots, there are multiple brownfield sites across the county. Do we ever do that with any of them in their area plans?
I don't recall that we, I mean, we are aware of brownfield sites, and we have made reference to brownfield sites in many of our planning documents. I don't know that we methodically, as we do an area plan, scan to see what brownfield sites there are, but since this was a fairly unique situation that came up recently, and we know that there's been a lot of public concern there, we just thought it might be, if you're interested in it, we could, we could approach it that way. One thing we might be able to do in the future is knowing we had an inventory of brownfield sites, we could certainly make reference to that in our area plans in the future. And certainly, when we know that there is an environmental factor that limits development, we do that all the time with watershed areas and all that, that could very well influence land use recommendations. But in this case, there's still a lot of unknowns that need to get clarified on that, but perhaps there's enough to just, to certainly make some reference to it in the plan.
I think it's, it's setting a precedent that may not be prepared to do and be consistent with it because you'd almost have to go through and do an evaluation of all the properties for that particular purpose. And if you're going to do that, I personally think it's a little bit beyond the scope of what the area plan is designed to do because you, those types of sites, whether they're official brownfields or superfunds or UST sites, there are so many throughout the areas. I think it's, I wouldn't recommend picking one site and putting it in an area plan if we're not going to consistently do that across the board for our sites.
I have a little bit of a different perspective on that. This was not on my radar screen. I was the, the planning board member that was assigned to this plan, so I was, I went to all the meetings. And it was not on my radar screen that there was an issue with contamination until this incident with Kaba came up. The Kaba site is very serious. I mean, it's, I think, one of the most contaminated sites in the state, so this is something that I think really warrants mention in an area plan, which is a planning document for land use. And I think in order to make decisions about land use, it's important to know if there's a problem with toxic contamination. However, and also, this area, I think, is unique in that we saw that there is a heavy concentration of industrial land, which has a very long history. It goes back in time. The Kaba site goes back to the 1880s. So it goes back to a time when a lot of this wasn't regulated. So I think because of the unique aspect of this, and also, if you look at the map, you can see that these industrial areas are very close to residential areas. And I just think that because this planning area has these unique characteristics, to me, it's worth taking a look and doing more of an inventory of the brownfield sites to see, is there a concentration of toxic sites in one area? And if so, make some recommendations to address that, recommendations that maybe the council can take to address it, because I think without doing that, the environmental recommendations are, you know, not very valuable, because I think that's an important component of understanding this area and how to plan for land use in the future. So I would, I'm very much in favor of doing some kind of a inventory of the brownfield sites here and maybe delay this for a month or two.
Just brownfield sites in this area or the whole?
Yes.
I mean, we probably have an inventory citywide, don't we, Paul?
Margaret, do you know what we have?
There are lists, yes. There certainly are.
I am not an expert in this area, but it is my understanding that there are various lists. I think Ms. Smith referred to them, so we would have to, you know, make some determination of which sites we were going to quote inventory. They all They all mean different things and they would mean different things in land use recommendations. I'm not exactly sure how we would use those once we had those. And it is my understanding that that information is out there, it's just not in our planning documents.
Yeah, my concern was just if there is a concentration of sites in a particular area that might warrant a recommendation for some kind of program that would address cleanup of that particular area and perhaps getting federal funds to do that. So we won't know if there's a problem unless we do an inventory.
Ms. Smith, you're the expert on that.
Well, I can say it can address that. In terms of the land use, for any change or investment of money or real estate, there will be an evaluation of the phase one, phase two type of work. So nothing is going to happen on a site these days without that being evaluated. So I don't think we're at risk of sites being there and development planned and all of a sudden we find something out. The information is there and it's part of the process, part of the development or redevelopment process.
I'm just talking about the impact, the cumulative impact of a concentration of sites on a particular area and should there maybe be public policy addressed to remedy that. And we won't know to do that if we don't do a wider examination of the situation.
And I also don't think that we have data, you know, you don't discover the nature of the remediation requirement until you do the phase one or the phase two or something like that. So you may have a, you know, if you decide you're going to put a red circle on the small area plans for all of your brownfields, some of those may represent $5,000 remediation cleanups, some of them may represent $50 million remediation cleanup. So I think you can, I think you can, you know, stigmatize neighborhoods with maybe even a $1,000, $5,000 remediation site. I mean, it's just something to think about before you start drawing circles on your maps.
I understand what you're saying and I agree, but I do think that, you know, given the seriousness of what happened over at the Haynes Laurent's, you know, site where people didn't know and people were saying they wished they had known. And so I just think we need to make some of this information more publicly available.
I'm just not sure the land, the area plan processes was designed to accomplish that. Yeah? Do you have something to say?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out to the board that in addition to the specific language that Paul mentioned regarding Haynes Laurent's, we also came up with some more general language that kind of gets at some of the concern voiced by the board. In fact, almost some of it is verbatim, where we mentioned that there are industrial or maybe dry cleaning, fuel sales, any of those type of uses that could exist anywhere, those are the likely uses and the sites around those uses that may have some contamination issues come to light on a site-specific development basis. So it's kind of like some of the language generally that we discussed with other environmental issues like floodplains or stormwater impacts, that these are just things that may come up as you go through a site-specific development process, but that aren't really addressed by the area plan on a site-specific level. So if the board does choose to maybe kind of go to a halfway position and have some general language on this, but recognizing that it is part of the due diligence, as Ms. Smith said, for each individual project as it goes forward.
I just, my personal and professional opinion, it's inappropriate to get into that detail within our process. There are whole agencies and departments that deal with this and their information is publicly available. And I think by recognizing in general the zoning, the, if we know the historical uses, that is as much as we, it would be appropriate to put in our planning process. And that's evident by the historical use, by the zoning and the land use.
Well, I can tell you firsthand, I've been through these, tell them two pieces of property that I own. And you're not going to get any financing, you're not going to get anything until these tests are done. The second thing is, if we're going to do something like this, I think this needs to be somewhere. I mean, I don't, I don't think this is under our charge as far as an area plan for it to be here. If we want to do it, it seems like to me there would be, need to be a whole new category somewhere for this to happen if we're going to, because I don't know how you're going to identify these places without the funds, without spending the money. They go out and bore holes. I mean, there's a lot of, lot of process to this. And for somebody to just come forward and say, you know, this is a brownfield and we want to test it or whatever, that's, that's all well and good, but then you worry about the funds and how you're going to come up with that to do the testing. And I just, I just feel like that this is, this is not where we need to be. I understand what you're saying about, you know, concerns and those type things, but it's just a lot more to it. Because I've had stage one and stage two. When you go through stage one, then they may call for a stage two test. And it, it can really get expensive. And, but anyway, that's, I'm just not sure that this is the place that, you know, right here is where this needs to be. If we want to do it, let's try to come up with some other type of agency or some type of a, I don't know, but I just don't think the planning board is the place it needs to be.
While you're thinking about it, let's get the public hearing behind this and let folks in the audience have an opportunity to speak on this and then we'll come back to this at the end of the public hearing.
Yeah, they may have an answer out there.
Yeah, okay. So, anyone that would like to speak in support of the recommendation of the area plan, come give us your name and address, please.
Jeff McIntosh, 129 Woodbrow Road. I don't know if I'm speaking in support of it, but I'm just curious as to the, the impact of the Whittaker Park announcement and what's going to happen there. That's a, that's a pretty big elephant in the room. And I know from a timing standpoint, it's not an ideal time for it to be announced in regards to this report coming out. So is, would we go back and look at that again and spend a little more time on that because that's going to, that could potentially have a huge impact on land use around it?
All right, thank you. Good point. Anyone else like to speak? Speak now, forever holds your peace. I guess not then. Now, I declared the public hearing closed, so we're, and I apologize, I don't recall what the plan said about Whittaker Park. Do you recall, Ms. Duncan?
Whittaker Park is actually in the north suburban area.
Well, the boundary is Reynolds Boulevard, so some of it is on, some of it is on the south side, good, most of it's on the north side there. But the land uses that are shown are a combination of office and industrial.
So fits with what we're hearing about it anyway.
From everything I've heard, it would fit with that. Now, there may be some circulation changes in terms of how the roads access the area, though from the maps that I've seen, those are north of Reynolds Boulevard. But, you know, I think the only difference is that if there was a mixture of uses that included residential, that isn't accommodated in here. But as I understand it, it's primarily going to be a business park type thing.
And we need to remind ourselves that this, again, is just a guide. And those type changes come through here for rezoning and go to council as well. So this is just a sort of a general 10,000-foot view of the area, so. But back to the, yes.
Paul, when you first started this conversation, whatever, you said some wording, whatever. Maybe, maybe we got a little sidetracked. Did we get sidetracked on what we were talking about here on what, what you were, you said that we could put some wording in, in this about?
What I said was, was if the board wants to have even some very general discussion about, about that issue or the issue in general, we have some language that keeps it fairly general, doesn't, doesn't recommend a course of action other than just careful due diligence on it, but just, but just discloses that in there. So if the board's interested, I can hand out that language, you can see what it is. But, but my off, I mean, I was just simply saying, if you're interested in doing that, we have something we could offer.
Yeah.
And what would you insert that in the plan? I mean, what were you thinking?
Well, we've got, here, there we go, man that down. There's actually two places that where we were thinking that if you did put something in, might be, one is in the first part of the plan, there is, the whole, the first section deals with existing conditions and there's different categories that are discussed. So the category this would fall under is called the environment. And of course, there's discussion about things like floodplains, wetlands, topography, and so there could be something called contaminated sites. And so that first paragraph there talks very generally about that, gets back to some of the things that Kirk just told you. And, you know, you can, you can see there that last sentence talks very specifically other, often contamination issues only surfaces, properties are more closely examined as they are being developed or redeveloped. And then there, the other paragraph talks about the Haynes Laurent's situation there, but just doesn't specifically talk about a course of action other than what has been done there and, and the groundwater extraction system that was installed. And, and so there, that would be in the existing conditions. And then the next page over is in the recommendations section of the plan. So there is a section called environmental recommendations. And so what you see underlined there at the bottom would be a couple of bullets that would be added under the environmental recommendations. And again, you can see that those are, the first one is very general. And then the second one, although it does mention Haynes Laurent's, it is also very general. Follow best management practices for reuse of the site and properties in the surrounding area.
And I think what you say under contaminated sites, I think that that's, that's good. I mean, you know, you cover some of that, you know, so.
Not, not proposing to put a map in because to tell you the truth, none of us can completely figure out what is meant on the map about all the areas that are shown and all the outlying bubbles and what exactly does that mean? So we're afraid the map would not be as helpful as it could be, but the, but the general description we thought could be appropriate.
Ms. Duncan, would this meet, address most of your concerns?
It, I, I do think it addresses a lot of my concerns. In the general recommendations, the last sentence, follow best management practices for the reuse of the school site and properties in the surrounding areas, in a sense, addresses what I'm talking about, which is my concern that there may be issues with the surrounding area, not just the Haynes site. The only thing that seems missing in a way, and I don't know how this could be added in, but is some kind of a recommendation to, to monitor conditions around neighbors, residential areas to make sure that there isn't contamination that's affecting residences. And my concern about that really goes to, you know, the fact that this plume that was reported seems to be traveling and the direction that it's going is in a residential area. And I, I would just like to see some, some way in which we could recommend that in cases of known contamination, that we're monitoring to make sure that it's not affecting health.
Again, I think that all of those, those are appropriate concerns and issues. I don't think this is the appropriate place to put it. Each of those programs, house waste section, superfund, groundwater, they all have requirements that, that very strictly require all the things that you're talking about. And they all have public comment and public notification and public access to what's going on in their programs. So I think those are valid concerns about any of our communities, not just this one. But I don't think this document is the appropriate place to put those. We would need to be consistent and if you really look at the scope of how you would consistently do this, you would need another department to do it.
Are you okay with the comments here that are suggested by staff relevant to this one particular area plan or?
Honestly, they're meaningless as far as actually doing anything that's not going to be done, so.
No foul, no harm, no harm, no foul, huh?
Yeah. I think, I would not put these in here. I don't think it's an appropriate place, but they're.
But is there a problem if they were put in there? You said it's doing it good.
No. And I think there are things that are, that anyone doing, redeveloping any area like that is going to do this.
Anyway.
It's going to look, so.
Public hearing has been closed on the area plan. Whether recommendations are born. Further discussion, questions?
Well, I mean, about the recommendations, I mean, I don't know, I got mixed emotions, but I really, I don't think it would really hurt anything to put it in there myself. I mean, as far as the, you know, what's being said in here, it just, it's really brief, but it does, it does address some issues and where it goes after that, after it's read, then it may not go anywhere, but at least it addresses it and knows, it sort of lets the public or people know that we are thinking about it. And, you know, rather than not say anything, I don't know, you know, that's just.
My, my one concern about having this in there is we've picked one site that we know of because of this. What about people that live close to other sites that are not getting that attention? And I don't know how many sites are in this area. You could look at public databases and find that out. There's nothing wrong with these, these are good things to do, but for our planning purpose.
Well, I think you said it before, we have to be consistent with it and, you know, we can't just address this, we're going to open this up, we're not going to be able to address this, this one site. We're going to have to look at it everywhere. If we're going to do that, and you're right about your statement, it's going to take more than, than this when it, if it does, you know, open up.
In future area plans, and there may be some area plans that don't have a brownfield site in them, the rural ones probably will have less of a chance to have a brownfield site than more urban areas. But would you, how would you feel about putting just a general paragraph in every area plan that sort of referred folks to, I don't know, Brownfield's list or Brownfields list or, I don't know, I don't know.
Well, I think some of them might have already in here.
Yeah, I've got the same concern about specifically delineating this one case when I think there are, and this may be the dirtiest site in the county, I don't know, it may be, I don't, I don't have enough data. I don't even think anybody has enough data yet, they'll probably, they'll probably know soon. But, but, you know, there's industrial sites, there's a lot of them, and I'd hate to just point out this one site. There's not quite, my concern is not quite as great as it normally would be because this is public owned property. If this were private site, I'd have a lot of concern about it, but.
Well, the first paragraph on the first page and the first bullet on the second page are very generic. They don't refer to any sites.
Yeah, yeah.
And just if I could interject on that, that's how we set this up so it could be part of that template for future area plans, that those first paragraph would at least make some general reference to these issues and acknowledge that this may not be the tool to delve deeply into the site specifics of environmental contamination, but at least it puts it on the table as a potential issue that could affect development.
Then I might make this suggestion, that those first paragraphs under each bullet point become part of this in future plans, because they are general, but when this is presented to the council, we point out this second item that we, you know, we don't know right now, no one knows how much contamination's on that site. But we can point that, you know, we're aware of this and we're sure they're going to watch it just like, and maybe we don't put the specific site in the area plan, but the general statement I have no problem with, that some sites in this planning area, and this will hold true to every area plan we do, that may have environmental contamination.
Like that.
And then maybe when we're presenting this, when the recommendation goes forward to council, we, you know, we certainly ought to publicly mention that we're aware of what's at the Haynes Laurent's, and there's some concerns here, but we're not sure that the area plan, changing this plan is the appropriate place to incorporate that specific. Is that?
Yeah, I agree with that.
What, you're proposing removing the second paragraph?
Removing it, but letting Paul or Kelly or whoever, when they present to council, read that. If it. read that, if they'd like to, not necessarily print it in the document, but make sure they, you know, we had a discussion about it here, and, but we didn't feel it was appropriate to put it in the plan. Is that-
Well, my, my concern is to say follow best management practices, these are complex, complicated sites, that the management of those and the cleanup will take a long time, and is beyond what we do. They're, as I said, they're overseen by a regulatory agency that has specific requirements that we don't know what they're going to be, we're not the experts working on that particular site.
If we start dealing with one particular site, now, I, I think I'm, Ms. Smith pointed here, then we need to be prepared to do that of every site in every area plan, and then we negligent, we miss one, and we certainly will.
Well, I would not want people to mistakenly think they can look at an area plan and know all of this. They need to go to specific resources and databases that will tell them what's going on in their neighborhood.
I said perhaps Mr. Lamb's suggestion, under that first paragraph on contaminated sites, then there's another statement, if, for information, here's where you go, if you can find where brownfield sites might be.
Well, no matter what we put in here, they're gonna be further, they're gonna be further tests and everything else, 'cause, 'cause Brenda knows, you know, about this, and I do too. I mean, it's just, once you get into this, it really becomes involved. It's nothing we can put right in here on, say, oh, this site's fine and this site's not, we can't even go there, can't even, can't even guess, 'cause you can't tell, look in the soil, you gotta dig hole.
Well, I'm in favor of keeping, keeping it as is, because we do, we are aware of this situation, and it is a serious situation, and I think it's worth referencing in the plan. And I don't see that because we do this here, that we have to follow some kind of uniform process with every area plan. Every area is different, every area has unique characteristics that need to be considered. And I think in this area, because of all of this heavy industry that's gone on, that there are, it is unique, so I'm in favor of keeping it as is.
Well, the thing about it is, if you do it across the board, then it's gonna be across the board, if you, and, and when you're pointing out this one site, then, you know, I think people are gonna be looking for that in the future, because you pick, you pick this site, and what you're gonna, the site you're gonna pick for me, and that's the reason that, you know, we're gonna, if we leave it at a general tone, then they won't be looking for specifics, 'cause I don't think it's our place to be, you know, specific about this. And I understand what you're saying about it, you know, this site here, it's on, it's on the front page of the paper every day now, I mean, yeah, it's in the forefront, but hopefully a year or two from now, it'll, you know, it'll be taken care of and be all right. Won't happen that soon, but we know that, but, uh, I think it, I think anytime you put anything into an area plan, or any type of whatever, you have to be more of a general type term, because if you get too specific, it's, people are gonna be looking, looking more into their area town, and then they're gonna want that, whatever the next brownfield is, that's gonna come to the forefront, and it's just gonna keep, whereas if we just make it in general terms, then that's what it'll be. And I say it again, this is not, this is not the place. I think as a planning board, we're not here to, to get really deep, deep into this or involved into it, we're to be more on the general, general terms on the area plan.
Well, again, I don't agree, because in area plans, we're always making specific site recommendations for different pieces of land, saying this land, this land has this characteristic, therefore, we don't recommend this type of development on this land. If you look at the land use maps, there are all these specific areas that are taken out and addressed separately in the plan, in the land use section, and I don't see any different, that this is any different, because it's an environmental issue.
Oh, I understand, I understand what you're saying, but, 'cause I've sitting in some of these meetings also, and it's almost like if you say that or whatever, you're rezoning it, and we, we've had a problem with people coming down here, you know, or whatever. Another thing that happens is land zoning, or, all that changes over time. You know, someplace that may not be good for business now, maybe five or 10, 20 years from now, may be good for business. And that's what I, that's the reason, that's the only reason I say keep it in a general tone, because the way I see it, we're planning for on down the road, way on down the road, and the more we can plan for that, if we get too specific, we're planning for right now, we're planning for today, we got to look ahead, the way I see it.
Well, one of the things to consider, too, is what you brought up, with a remediation plan, with a recovery plan, technology, that, as bad as it seems now, this site condition may not in the future prevent that site from being reused. I mean, hopefully it will not.
Right.
We probably every day go into a facility, a building, that has a vapor recovery system that at one point had a groundwater contamination beneath it, and they're all viable, usable properties. And that's part of what the programs are about, and part of what brownfield is about, that you do take these sites and make them usable and safe, and the technology's there, the oversight is there. And, um, so, like you said, you brought up a good point, long-term, this may or may not affect, it'll affect the cost of the redevelopment and some of the choices, but it may not limit, in fact, whatever happens with the final use of the property.
Good, good example of that's radon. You know, back years ago, we never knew what radon was, and now, when you see, you walk around the house and you see a fan running, well, they're pulling radon out, you know, so that's, that's an example, too. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, no, I was gonna say, as of right now, we don't even know that this site is unsafe. I mean, testing is still going on, and, and there are plenty of homes in here, we have radon that are more dangerous right now than probably was on this site.
Right.
And so, that's-
Well, I mean, this is a, you know, the, up until a few weeks ago, they were planning on building on this site.
And it probably still could.
And now they've decided not to, and it, I think, if the information had been out there, they wouldn't have made that decision. I think that's what the school board members have said. So, again, I mean, I don't see any problem with singling out sites that are of serious concern, for whatever reason, and, that have unique characteristics that need to be addressed.
Well, I don't know for all that-
I'd like to get a motion on this, and then we'll vote one way or the other on how much to modify this.
And if I could just remind you, what the staff is bringing forward to you is, of course, the draft, that, and, and also the specific changes that Kelly left at your places there, or went over? So, and then what you do with this is your option to make a motion of whatever it is you'd like for it to say.
Some, all, or none of this, this, someone needs, I'd like someone to make a motion on the area plan with this.
Okay, I move that. So you want, you want the area plan and with any amendment that you propose one?
This.
Okay, all right. So I move that we approve the area plan with the, handout amendment that we were given, and also that we put a general, I think, you know, paying attention to brownfields and their location is something to think about, absolutely. So I do think that we need some general language in the, you know, in this area plan about contaminated sites. And then, I, I don't know, I don't know enough about it to know what kind of references we need to make in terms of materials, or departments, or do you just contact Deaner? Is that what you do? I mean, is that what you do?
If you'd like to include a direction to us, to add a sentence that says where they can go for more information, resources, we can come up with the-
Okay, I, I would like to see general language, and maybe, I don't know, we have enough time to mark this up, or if we just give you a request.
The first paragraph is pretty general.
Okay.
Under there, I think.
Okay, yeah, I agree, all right, and then the second page is-
The first bullet point.
Carefully, by, so have you eliminated the last one, the last bullet, that gets rid of the specific? See, I, I mean, I can think of, I can think of four or five pretty nasty sites in West Salem right now, and, and, you know, we don't know the data on this, but I'm gonna bet you that they'll end up being just as bad or worse than what this site ends up being, or, the, the thing is, you know, whether you can contain it or not, and that's a, that's a huge factor. So I'm really nervous about the specificity, because I just don't think we have the, the data, and I think there may be 10 other, or 20, or 30 other sites in this area plan that may be potentially just as, in, you know, in need of remediation as this Haynes-Lorance site.
Probably the one you asked us to vote on earlier today has bigger problem, or bigger at one time than this one.
Yeah. So that would be my motion. I've made that motion. Strike, take the-
Specific references that, take, use the first paragraph under each of the bullet points, and strike the segments that are specific to Haynes-Lorance.
Right, right, so contaminated sites, the heading, the first paragraph, and then under general recommendations, all bullets except for the last, that would be my motion.
Okay. Is there a sec?
Second.
Second, Mr. Younger, discussion. Any comments, Duncan?
I would just wanna say that I support everything in the plan, um, I don't, though I don't support this amendment, I think all the language that was provided should be in it, um, and I also do think that more needs to be done to study how widespread contamination is in this planning area.
Okay. Any other comments? We have a motion approval with the amendments, all in favor? Opposed, Ms. Duncan's opposed, okay, that passes. Thank you.
And I'm assuming that that motion with the amendment would come with the additional sentence that we would add that has, where you can get more information on-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Right.
And, and do you want it mentioned to the council that this board talked about the Haynes-Lorance, and we had some concerns, but left it out of here, don't you think that should be? They may want to do- Let them know that we didn't just ignore that.
Yeah, they might.
But it wasn't sure it should be included in the plan.
It should be in the minutes.
Yeah, it'll be in the minutes, and then we'll also mention it as part of our presentation.
That's good, thank you. Okay, uh, then I guess we'll probably overhear the committee reports by now.
Uh, no committee reports.
Okay. How about staff report?
All right, uh, we had a deadline date for our March meeting, and we have 11 cases, nine new ones, two continued, two, and also two planning board reviews, and one text amendment, so you'll have a busy month, next month.
Very good.
Very good.
Well, and I pay.
Other thing I wanna mention is that you have some, uh, planning board members, I guess, elect is what I would term it, George Bryan, if he's still here? Did he le, okay. George Bryan has been appointed to the vacant position that's on the planning board, and by the city council, that will be going to the county commissioners for confirmation, and then Clarence has been approved for his next term by the county commissioners, that'll be going to the city council for, so, that's sort of the update on where we are with, with terms. We have a new GIS planner who I'll introduce at our, our work session, Kevin Edwards, who's actually coming to us from the transportation department, but has a lot of GIS experience, so he's very excited to be working for us, and so we're back to full staff in, in planning now. I already mentioned the Great Places thing earlier there, and you got in your packet this one-page document called Development Dashboard, and I just wanted to tell you, we're, we're kinda tickled about this, 'cause this is, this is something that we wanna do quarterly, with the January report each year being a year in review, but what we decided to do, you, you're familiar with the Trends Report, very lengthy report, chock full of graphics and, and all that, real, really good information, but we weren't sure that many people were reading it. So, we decided, what could we do that, that would be very short and concise, and people would, could really grasp onto it and all that? So we decided that we would kinda do a, we'd call it a dashboard, and so these little charts here, kind of in just a glance, tell you for the residential side and the commercial side, what was it for the reporting period, and what was the 10-year high, what was the 10-year low, and what was the last period there? So we gave it for both residential and non-residential. Then on the flip side, through our GIS system, we mapped all the building permits for the entire year, coded them by land use, sized them according to the, the size, so you can get an idea of where it is, kinda gives a little narrative there. And then we decided that each time we do one of these, we will pick a special subject and kinda zoom in on that and give a little bit more information, so in this case, we did downtown, but we'll change up the subject each quarter, and so for the three other quarterly reports, it'll be for the previous quarter, and then it, like I say, in January, it'll be for the year. But I hope, we'd love to hear any comments from you about whether this hits the mark there, but we thought maybe this would be more usable, so.
This is great, Paul, I, I really read it, I mean, it was bright and cheerful, and, and I, I loved your points, I mean, you know, you're right on, right on target, the, the, no, no floundering, just right to the point, telling us what construction was doing and developing, I mean, it's right to the point, I just loved it, it's just fantastic, and I appreciate it.
And thanks to Steve and Lynn Rusher, and also the inspections folks who provide all this information, so one benefit of having a merged department there, so.
That means Steve doesn't come to us once a year and start asking questions and quizzing us now with his Trends Report.
Yeah, he could still do a quiz for you if you want, but, and I think with that, that is, that is all the staff report.
Okay, very good. Any board members, anything, for the good of the order?
I just wanna wish everyone a happy Valentine's. Don't forget the flowers and candy. Motion adjourned.
Second, all in favor?
Uh.
We're adjourned.